Good evening, Beverly and everyone here at City Hall. My name is Derek Beckwith and I'm proud to be the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee and very proud to open up our annual meeting, our public hearing, to receive input, ideas, and solicit thoughts from the citizens of Beverly and for us to help educate everyone here and at home on how to go about applying for a project, how the CPA is a resource that perhaps you could tap into for some ideas you have for how you'd like to improve our great city, and so tonight we'll be rolling through that. I so officially call the meeting to order, and I'd like to introduce the members of the committee who are here, and we'll start at the far left with Nancy Marino.
Good evening.
And then we have our CPA Coordinator, Staff Person, Jean Delios, who's been doing a fantastic job for us. We have Vice Chair Wendy Pearl. Wendy has rejoined the CPC just a month or so ago and has leapt to the position of Vice Chair, but of course, most people will remember that she chaired the committee and has been an officer, Vice Chair, or whatever, for 10 different years. And I was very happy to have joined when she was still on the committee, her first go around, and learned a lot from her, and we will all learn from her again tonight. And then David Urshin, I'd like to welcome. David is here, he's going to be going over the budget tonight for us, so that we can all understand how that's working this year. And Jamie Jamison here. Both David and Jamie are two of our newest members, and Jamie is going to be talking about the impact the CPA has had throughout different parts of Beverly. And we have three members who've contributed a great deal, but unfortunately, had to be out of state for a variety of reasons. And Robert Buxbaum, Kristi Edwards, and Heather Richter are all very sorry that they're missing tonight in person, they're with us in spirit, and will be working throughout the year on the different priorities that we identified tonight and beyond as we look at Round 13, because today is the kickoff for Round 13 of Beverly's Community Preservation Act Funding Process. I'd also like to thank Bev Cam and Kim Elean, thank you very much. Kim is here, I see him, I'm the Planning Board Representative on the CPC, and so he's at every Planning Board meeting, I feel like I spend every other weeknight with him these days. But he's going to be switching around the cameras and bringing this to you live, and this will also be available syndicated as a repeat show for people to watch, and so tell your neighbors and friends to tune in. So, if we can go to the first slide on the agenda. Tonight's agenda, well, I just finished the welcome, so welcome, everyone. I'm just going to give a brief history of the Community Preservation Act here in Beverly, along with other members of the team. We'll hold the official part of the public hearing to discuss community needs, possibilities, and resources, and then we'll take a deep dive into how to apply for CPA funds. We'll hear from past applicants who've actually been awarded money and what their view of the process is, and then we'll also go into the nitty-gritty of eligibility requirements and important dates and deadlines, the application itself, and take questions and answers. So that's our roundup of tonight, and so now we're going to go, thank you for giving me time to get my notes here, we're going to take a quick look at the history of the Community Preservation Act in Massachusetts. It was passed in September, actually, of 2000. It's officially known as Chapter 44B, and Beverly became a CPA community in 2012. Now, at the time, I think there were 100 and something communities, in the low 100s perhaps, but since that time, we've continued to get more and more communities throughout the state, and this past year, we now have 201 communities of our 351 cities and towns that belong or are officially CPA communities. Each community has voted on the ballot to become a community and that is a part of the network, so we're able to get budgets set aside, we're able to get some state-matching funds, and we're able to do, to put those funds together. Overall, it's viewed as a smart growth initiative to help cities and towns remain healthy and grow stronger economically and vibrantly through the different projects to protect our resources and build and grow. The areas that we're able to work and fund projects are in the areas of open space, historic buildings and resources, affordable housing, and recreation, that's, you know, parks, playgrounds, recreation fields, things like that. So those are the different areas. Now, we just don't, you know, solicit things randomly, there's a whole process to it, and our funding process works with the applications kicking off each fall. We do informational outreach, we do this meeting, we work with prospective applicants to help them apply. There's a pre-application that comes in, and then we evaluate those, see which ones are eligible for funding, and invite those applicants who have projects that are eligible for funding to put a full application together. That comes in in January, and then from January until April, the committee itself works with the different applicants and makes a decision on which ones we recommend the City Council fund. The City Council plays a very important role, because they are the ones who will actually take the recommendations, weigh our recommendations, and then vote on whether or not to put city resources behind the projects that we've reviewed. So thank you to the City Council for everything you do in this entire process. The, I think I've talked about what today is, we actually have, as part of our work with this meeting and our work throughout the year, is we have a community preservation plan. We have copies here tonight, there are also copies online. As a matter of fact, we encourage everyone to go to the Beverly website and just look at Community Preservation Committee. We have a page, or many pages, on the city website. You go there and you'll be able to see all of the information we're going over tonight, every application that we've reviewed and accepted, and that has been funded, and you'll be able to really get a sense of the impact we've had as a city, as a community preservation community. The, to date, we have received 111 applications through our 11, now this will be the 13th actual year of doing this, we have 111 applications that have come in, 92 have received funding, and of that, the total that has been put forward is 3 point, excuse me, $10.9 million to projects from open space to community housing to recreation to historic preservation. So, to dive a little bit deeper into what sort of projects we've had, where they've been in the city, Jamie is going to take us through a more in-depth look, and she has a couple of slides to present tonight.
Hi, everybody. If you look at the pie chart, this shows what proportion of that $10.9 million has gone to the four categories that you can apply for money in. It excludes pending projects, but the highest percentage is historic resources, which I think is amazing, that we've been able to allocate that much money to preserve Beverly's really rich historic resources. Then community housing, which seems to be heavy on everybody's mind these days, 35% of the money has gone to community housing. 15% has gone to open space, and that's really for just two large projects. And recreation, 13%, that includes all the playgrounds that dot Beverly that have had grants from CPA. Now, this is a map, which I think you might enjoy looking at online more than up on the board. It's color-coded, so that community housing projects are red, historic resources, blue, open space, green, and recreational, yellow, and largely recreational is parks. The two projects for open space, I'm an Open Space Committee member on the CPC, are Marine Farm up in North Beverly and Camp Paradise. The city bought Camp Paradise outright, Marine Farm is a partnership with Trustees of Reservations, and the total spent on those two projects is $1,550,000 for just those two projects, so that's the nature of the open space category. It's really for acquiring land, not for improving it or putting anything on the land. Historic resources, it's pretty amazing what we've done, and a lot of it is in the downtown area. If you look at the inset, you'll see things like Gerdler House, which is a recent project, Hill Farm, which is part of Historic Beverly, Cabot House, also part of Historic Beverly, City Hall, this is an interesting one, money went for the preservation of documents, so it doesn't have to be maintaining a building, it can be other historic resources. And then the two theaters, the Larkham Theater and the Cabot Theater, received funds. The Larkham for their marquee, and the Cabot Theater, they're doing a big renovation there, but the money from the CPC focuses on restoring the rose window above the front So that's historic and open space. Recreational, you can see parks all over the city, from Birch Plains Park, where the pickleball courts went in, and not just the courts, but sound remediation structures. Also, if we go look at Pete's Park in Centerville, come down Lynch Parks had multiple grants, Dane Street, project for Gillis Park and Goat Hill is coming along, O Bear Park in Rouse Side, it's just really a very recent project is Holcroft Park and Ward III. It's really every corner of the city, this is not all of them, I'm just naming some. And, community housing, again, some very large projects, like Anchor Point, just above the high school, the Briscoe Project. It's not always building something, it's often maintaining or restoring it, like the Simon Street BHA Building, Beverly Housing Authority Building Roofing, Bald Street, Beverly Housing Authority Door Replacements. It's just, all kinds of things can be done with this money, although CPA law is very particular about some things, so you need to pay attention to the fine points. That's about it.
Thank you very much, Jamie, and we will go into the eligibility and the different, what's possible in each one of the four categories, in excruciating detail later on. That's what I get to work on. And next, for a closer look at the city budget, David's going to talk about where we are this year.
Hi, everyone. You can see on the screen, it's our fiscal 2026 budget, but you'll note that it's estimated, we won't have it finalized till a little bit later in the fall. And where the money comes from, there's a 1% surcharge on the real estate tax, and then there's, as you'll see, there's a state match, again, these are estimated numbers, we'll probably be close, for the total budgeted revenue of $1,280,070. And so here's how it's allocated. You'll notice that historic resources, community housing, and open space each get 10%, which is $128,007. And then there's the general budget reserve of $832,045, the biggest amount. And then we have the administrative budget of $64,000, which has been very helpful. It really has actually been great for us. I think the first few months of here, we didn't have anyone, a dedicated resource person, so I want to reiterate what Derek said, it's great to have Jean. Next slide, thank you. So here's the available balances by the reserve, and this includes the anticipated funding. So, the $267,299.61 Historic Resources Reserve, $279,998.46 Community Housing Reserve, and then the $529,998.58 Open Space Reserve. So this includes, this is rollover money, so that's why this number is bigger. And then the general budget reserve of $1,866,591.88 is our general budget reserve for a grand total of $2,943,888.53, and that's our total fund balance, which is a good amount this year. It's still under $3 million.
Yeah, $3 million is quite a bit, you know, and it's interesting, because we get the question from the City Council every once in a while, say, "Why is there such a big rollover this year?" And what we find is, it's fairly cyclical, because some of the projects, as Jamie talked about, are very large projects. The community housing, you know, if it's Anchor Point, if it's Briscoe, if it's the YMCA, if it, you know, other projects, you know, could be in the hundreds, thousands, and, you know, almost a million, I think, for one of the projects overall, that the CPA funds were able to support. And open space, the preservation restriction that we secured for Marine Farm cost $1.1 million, which is a lot of money, but that basically guarantees that there's not going to be development on that property. And so, the trails that are up there, the public access, the community gardens that have gone in, that sort of thing, are all available to us, we're not going to lose that space. And Camp Paradise, another hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that was early on, Camp Paradise was early on in the process, and, you know, the CPC has been here, we're coming into our 14th year, I guess, this is my sixth year, and we've only had one open space, pure open space project during that time, but they're very large, and so what happens with a large rollover, like we have almost $3 million here, but at some point in time, there'll be a project that comes before us, if it's another housing project, an open space project, that will sort of catch up with that, so that money is there. The other thing is, if we can go back to that slide, the budget slide, for a second, is that the numbers here, the $267,000, for example, for historic resources, we can't spend that money on anything else, okay? It has to be for historic preservation projects. The way the law is, was written, the state law was written, is that having 10% for, set aside for historic resources, for community housing, for open space, guarantees that those areas will not go unattended if some, a project comes up that is able to be, is eligible and can be funded, and so that it provides a preservation across a spectrum for communities. And that's, you know, one of the reasons why the balances are there, and the general budget reserve can be used for any of those categories, and also recreation. So that's the way it works, so, and that's why, you know, we're able to come into this cycle with a pretty hefty resource set. In addition to, and this is the last aside I'll say on budget stuff, in addition to spending money through our general application process, from time to time, we do have out-of-cycle grant applications that come to us that have to meet very specific, basically bordering on urgent need that needs to be fulfilled quickly. And so, that's something else that we can do outside of the process. They still have to go through an application and, you know, a whole process of us being able to vet it, but they can, project proponents that are coming forward, you know, can go through an out-of-cycle process as well. So having some money in the fund balance even after a cycle helps make sure that we do have a little something that we can put forward to help fund any urgent needs that come up during the course of the year. Now, all of that being said, we now enter the exciting part of the evening, and this is when Wendy's going to come up, and she's going to help guide this part, I've seen her do this before, so I'm looking forward to it, and this is to get input and thoughts, so to our audience here, we're looking forward to you talking and presenting your ideas and comments and thoughts, and I'm going to let Wendy take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening. So I am the Historic District Commission Representative to the Community Preservation Committee, so if I skew to the historic preservation category, I'm really sorry, just get me back on track. I'm so glad there are people here tonight, it means that you care about what this committee is doing and how this city can benefit from community preservation funding. So tonight, I just wanted to kind of explore some ideas to do two things. One is to satisfy our mandate, which is that every year, we have to have a public hearing to find out about needs, possibilities, and resources, their language, not ours, in the city, on how we can improve quality of life through Community Preservation Act funds. So that's why we're here tonight. But I also want you to know that in the 13 or 12 past rounds, in hearings like this, there might have been just a little seed of an idea that somebody heard and picked up as a project, and that became one of those 92 projects that was funded. We're not looking to people here tonight to get like saddled with their own idea, but to really share their kind of creative thoughts, their vision for our city, and how community preservation can enhance our lives. So it's an open conversation. Derek's going to be taking notes in each of the categories, but I would love for everyone to use the microphone, so that folks at home can hear you, and then it can be part of the recording as well. So we're looking for ideas around needs, so are we doing really well in one area and we need to improve in another? Have you seen a project in one part of the city that maybe could be replicated elsewhere? Are there places in the city that you just haven't seen community preservation funding really in effect? Is there an opportunity there to kind of spread the love? So those are the ideas we want to hear tonight, and like I said, anybody could be listening, so if you just have, you know, some kind of like, you think it's a dream, you think it's a wish, you never know. This is the program for the long run, and the ideas that we hear tonight can be part of our plan. Someone from the Open Space Committee might say, "Hey, that's a great idea," put it into their plan, so you're here to just kind of share your ideas. So with that, I have prompts I can ask, or if anybody has kind of the burning desire to get up to the podium and say what they came here to say, we'd love for someone to start off our conversation. Do you want to go to the podium? Okay, yeah, kick us off. So say your name, and do we need addresses tonight, too?
Yeah.
Name and address, please, and then the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Dan Richards, I live on Lyndon Avenue, and my proposal for the CPA is to replace the basketball court that's currently at Gillis Park. The basketball court right now is in a condition where the cracks are a little large, difficult for kids to ride their bikes, it's over the wear and tear over the years. With all the housing developed around that park and Ward II, the park is used heavily. What this project would do would be the keystone to two projects that are going on right now. We will be doing an entrance, which will be accessible for all, handicap accessible, and on the other end of the basketball court is a pavilion that the CPA has been helpful to fund, which will also be handicap accessible. The basketball court located right in the middle, and bringing that up to code would then bring these two projects together, and people of all abilities will be able to access for the first time the entrance to the park, to the back of the park, to enjoy the view. So this is kind of our keystone to bring it all together, and that's my proposal tonight.
Wonderful. That's a great example, similar to projects that have been funded in the past, but I love that it's integrated into a kind of bigger vision for that park, and certainly, those types of projects have been eligible for funding in the past. In general, the rehabilitation category allows for improvements to bring a property up to code, and that is true across all of the categories, except for open space, because the requirement in open space is to rehabilitate an open space property, it has to have been acquired with community preservation funds, so there's a little catch on that one, but parks under the recreation category, historic properties, and community housing can all be rehabilitated, so great example. Any other ideas? Yes? Name and address, thank you.
My name is Gail Dion, and I'm a...
Microphone.
My name is Gail Dion, and I'm a member of the seniors center in Beverly, and what I would like to see is a bocce court that we could use. We go to Marblehead, because we play other seniors, we play Marblehead and we play in Wenham, and Todd Rodundo from the Rouse Side Association... And Todd Rodundo from the Rouse Side Association, he did put a bocce court in, at Livingston Playground there. The only thing is with that is we share it with the kids. They, they put their trucks in there and they dig holes in there. And we end up bringing rakes and stuff to make the court smooth again before we can play. So I, if there was a place we could have our own court, and then it have, like, we do need bathrooms, a place where we could have bathrooms with it, too. So that's, that's my ideas.
Great idea. Bocce courts.
Any, any location, ideas on location?
I thought maybe Minch Park, because they do have bathrooms there.
Bocce courts at...
And they've also shade.
Anybody else come here with an idea tonight? Lots of activity in our recreation category. I thought it was interesting in the overview of projects that, you know, there are, the percentages kind of tell the story of where the, the resources have been enhanced with community preservation funding, and historic preservation has certainly benefited a lot. But there's, there's got to be opportunities in all of the categories. So hopefully, we can, through this conversation and building on the work of the committee, hear other ideas. There's always some kind of like open time at the beginning of our meetings to come and hear ideas from the public. That still exists, right? The little office hours opening. So if you just don't have your idea tonight, or if you're listening at home and you want to come to a meeting, you can always come and we would, we would love to hear those ideas. But I see a hand up, so we're going to get someone else at the podium.
I'm Erin Schaefer. I'm representing tonight as a resident of Gregg Street. I had a more technical question about open space funds and whether or not they could be used for public street trees. But that's a research question for another day that I would like to advocate for if open space funding could be utilized for planting shade trees. Our neighborhood recently lost a lot of tree coverage in the last few years, especially with the Bridge Street reconstruction. So that's one thing. The urban heat island effect has been pretty significant in our neighborhood recently. I also want to advocate for our basketball court at Livingston to be redone. We are also facing the same or similar challenges, mostly due to Livingston Park being a low spot with lots of flooding. And so our basketball court is in disrepair. And possible shade structures either over the playground or somewhere, some kind of pavilion shade structure, because the park is well utilized by the camps over the summer. And there really isn't much shade available, and the equipment gets really hot in the sun. On the community housing side of things, I'd really like to advocate for this CPC to really consider funding the Affordable Housing Trust. I know that the CPC has done that. I'd just like to put that out there as, you know, more funds could be utilized through that avenue. The Affordable Housing Trust is flexible, and we're thinking about different programs and services on a bigger scale that we may be able to offer. And with so many people who are needing affordable housing, but also need other types of funding sources for other kinds of programs and services that could be related to keeping people in their homes, certainly an opportunity there to utilize the Affordable Housing Trust in a, in a much larger scale. And I'm always an advocate of preserving historic resources. I just don't have any ideas at the top of mind at the moment, but anyway, thank you.
General support is welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's great. And the housing category is one that actually has the greatest variety of applications of community preservation funding, because there's a support category that really only applies to the housing category. And that can be more programmatic, but it is kind of tied to permanent affordability of units. So there's some technicalities in the housing piece that Nancy is our expert on. So we'd love to hear ideas in that category for sure. Anybody else?
Shall I rise to say a few words about historic preservation?
Pardon me?
Shall I rise to say a few words about historic preservation?
Oh, please rise. Yes, rise and speak.
I'm Dan Lowes from Quincy Park, past president for almost 40 years of Historic Beverly, Beverly Historical Society before that. And in the general, we may want to talk about Historic Beverly later, but I'm concerned when I sit, when I stand at the gas station at the corner of Dane and Cabot, and I watch the Dane Street Church disintegrating. That's a congregational church that was vital to the beginning, to the founding of this, of this city. Same way in North Beverly. I go there to the cemetery and I see that church needing a lot of, now, I know they're churches, and that may create a problem, and they may not have the infrastructure to ask for the money. But those are community resources that, you look at what, what was done to the JAR Hall with community preservation funds, and it's remarkable. And now hopefully, the city will keep it up, but there are these other resources out there, and you can kind of go through them and you can see them disintegrating. And it's, it's those community ones that are not individually owned, and as we all know, nonprofits never have enough money. So that need, somehow that needs to be on people's radar strings, I think. Thank you.
Excellent point. Thank you. In the historic preservation category, I want to note an omission from our little map, which was the most unusual historic preservation project. Does anybody remember the old McDonald's and the murals that were in the old McDonald's? The preservation of the Group A mural was funded by community preservation funding and is still in the works. Correct?
It might actually be in the Beverly Library, Public Library piece, because it's still being renovated, and part of the program is to then have it in its three panels actually installed at the library. So it could be the way the GeoMap is done, that it tagged it to the address. Yeah, that's right. So we, we, yep, the, it was an unusual project, so.
My error. I didn't understand the data point. But it's not yet there yet, right? So it's still being conserved and framed and stabilized. Remember, it's basically a wall with a painting on it, so it's, it's not your usual canvas and a frame. So I've just, I've loved that project, because it was really community-driven. People who had great memories of that, something that you wouldn't call necessarily high art, but a noted artist. And the preservation category can cover things that aren't buildings. So cemeteries, landscapes, artifacts, objects, vessels, if we have a boat that we could conserve. Paintings and important public records from the City Clerk's Office have also been conserved. So a broad range of resources. They just have to be determined significant by the Historic Preservation, the Historic Districts Commission if they are not already like a national register-listed property. So you have to go through kind of an early step if you're coming in in historic preservation for something that doesn't have a designation of some kind. Anyone else? Well, this is a great start, and I think this is getting all of our minds, our, the wheels in our minds turning about how we might take the community preservation plan and direct, direct resources to some of these priorities. And obviously, the recreation section, these notes can be shared with our, our recreation committee and just keep those conversations going. So thank you very much for your participation. I think that will close this part of our hearing. Yes? Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Wendy. And yeah, there are so many different, I mean, we have 92 really unique projects, so, but the Group A mural is one of them. I think we're all waiting with baby breath to see it finally installed. The, the next part of tonight's agenda, I'm going to turn over to Nancy Marino, who's going to introduce a few guest speakers.
Thank you, Derek. I always opt to volunteer to do this portion of the public meeting. It's the shortest, the easiest, and so it's my pleasure to introduce three of our many success stories. These three grantees will share a description of their projects and the process to apply for funding. So under the category of historic preservation, it's my pleasure to introduce Lisa Crowell. Lisa and her husband Dan, Dawn, I'm sorry, and their two boys, Lisa, two boys, own the Larkham Theater for some nine years.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lisa, and so I was recipient of, sorry. I was a recipient of the, what is it, Historic Resources Grant for the CPC. We just completed the project last week. It was, I'm trying to think back. It started about five years ago, when you say ideas come to the table. I discovered a picture of the 1912 marquee from the Larkham Theater, and had this vision, oh, what if we could bring that back to life? And so fast forward, we started, you know, raising funds, realized it cost a lot to restore marquee. Someone, I can't remember who, had told us about the Community Preservation Committee. And so I started the process about two years ago. Members here, as well as, we worked with so many committees, just very helpful. It was my first time doing this, but they guide you. There's really, as Derek said, they have a lot on their website, really spells out detailed. It was a very thorough process. They asked very great questions. In doing this project, you know, I had to reach out to the community to get their support, and hearing the stories of what the theater meant to them made the project even more exciting. So to now bring it to life, you know, encourage you, those here, or anyone home, take a walk or drive down Wallace Street, you'll see the marquee. It's beautiful, and to be able to restore and bring back to life, you know, a replica of the 1912 marquee is just really, it's just, it's beautiful. And encourage you all to check it out. Reach out to me if you have any questions or considering applying. I'm more than happy to help you. And thank you to all of you, and to many people, thank the Design Review Board, the Historic Beverly, the Zoning Board Appeals, and all the people in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. It was a pleasure working with you as well. Our next grantee was awarded funding for the creation of 77 affordable apartments and family housing. It's a real crown jewel here in Beverly, I think. Andrew Leonard is the Director of Real Estate Development for Harbor Light Homes, and Andrew's going to describe some of the project for, for us. Thank you, Andrew.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. And thank you to the committee. There were 77 families in Beverly who have a safe, affordable, high-quality place to sleep tonight because of CPC funds that that project received. And that might seem like a little bit of hyperbole, but it's certainly not, and I'll explain why. But first, like Nancy mentioned, my name is Andrew. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Harbor Light Homes. We're based here in Beverly. I'm also a Beverly resident, so not only have I had the opportunity to apply for and use some of these funds, I've also had the great opportunity to enjoy the benefits of it, whether it be going to Bo Bear Park or a Cub Scout camp out at Camp Paradise. So I'm really thankful for the ways that these funds show up in our community. Harbor Light's been very thankful to receive a few awards of CPC funding. We've received it for Anchor Point was, we have two phases of the project that have received funds. We were also involved with Beacon Communities on the Briscoe Project on what's now Beverly Village. So when I say, you know, 77 families, it's really a lot more than that, right? Because there's CPC money and a lot of affordable housing. That allows families who, families, seniors who would otherwise want to call Beverly Home but be priced out, it allows them to stay here. So if, you know, if you've raised a family here and all of a sudden you're finding you would be forced out onto another community, the sort of units that we construct with CPA funding allows those families to remain in this community. So we're very thankful for it. So Anchor Point is a three-phase project. The first two phases are now complete. There are two residential buildings of two and three units, all affordable units. They, the third phase will be a community center that's philanthropically funded that we're hoping to get started on later this year. But our mission at Harbor Light is to create affordable housing that's attractive to anybody, right? That if you drive by, you would think, oh, I'd want to live there myself. And the whole idea is, like I said, that we can keep people in the community who are an integral part of it, whether they're an essential worker of some kind, or they've, you know, committed their whole life to the city of Beverly. We want them to have a safe, quality place to live. So, you know, we've had some really great success stories here at Anchor Point that kind of prove, it's a proof of concept, right? Where you, we have one family where there's a daughter that went to Beverly Schools, kind of found some stability at Anchor Point and is now going to Northeastern on a full scholarship. And you can show that if you give people the tools and the opportunity, they'll really run with it. And so, like I said, CPA funding is so critical to this, because it's, I like to call it, it's the bravest funding that we have in the affordable housing world. When we're financing a project, we will knock on any door for anyone who can give us money to help to get these projects done. And usually, the first door we're knocking on is the CPA. And what it does, it really has a twofold purpose, right? So it's typically the first money in, and it shows that the city has skin in the game, that the community's got skin in the game, and that they're willing to get behind a project. And what we do then is we go to the state for state and federal resources, and we can point to them, and our application is far more competitive, if we can say, look, Beverly, through its CPA funding, has committed X number of dollars. Look, they're bought in, it's time for you to get in on this, too. Because no one wants to be the first to back a winning horse, right? But this committee has certainly done that several times. We're very thankful. So for Anchor Point Phase Two, that was a $23 million project. We received $850,000 in CPC funds. It's a very significant allocation that was hugely important. That leveraged, for every dollar, that leveraged more than $10 in state and federal resources, whether that be subordinate debt or tax credit allocations, that we would not have gotten, were we not able to say that the city of Beverly was behind us, and here's the proof. So it's hugely important. The other piece, not only does it leverage additional money, but it's critical to filling gaps and allowing us to complete these projects and ensure that they are as high quality as possible and as attractive and safe. And you can see, you know, we're able to include amenities like a playground, right? It's a simple thing. But, you know, this picture was taken early on in Phase One, but you'll see, you know, we have bike racks there that are loaded with bikes now, right? So these are really, this is about creating community. It's not just a place to live. It's, you know, it's, it's wraparound supports, it's wraparound amenities that really create a community that aren't possible. We wouldn't be able to get, we would have to cut things out if we didn't have things like CPC funds. So just to comment on the need and why the community housing piece is so important, echo the comments about how important community housing is, obviously. But we had, so Phase Two was 39 units. We had over 900 applications for those 39 units, the vast majority of which were eligible to live there. So the need is far more than we can keep up with, so, you know, we have to keep hammering our way at it. This had a local preference, which I think in the early discussions with our, with, when we were first getting CPC funds for this project, we agreed to the maximum local preference, which is a nice little tool that can be added in during this process, so that Beverly residents have sort of the first crack at these units. So, yeah, like I said, it, these projects aren't doable without this funding resource. It's a tremendous resource. And I do want to, I want to thank the committee for the awards we've received, but I also want to thank them, you know, we, as at Harbor Light, we're in front of a lot of CPC committees across the North Shore. Beverly runs a really transparent, a very efficient process with really thoughtful questions that sharpen up a project. So I... So I'm a big advocate for this resource and for the team's work to make it happen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Andrew. And last but not least, Historic Beverly's collection of three houses preserves our rich history. We at the CPA have worked closely on various projects with Historic Beverly, and Dan Loams will detail the most recent project benefiting the Cabot House.
I would like to say that this project is done, but it is not. Because you may have watched the saga of the ramp at the Cabot House, which was partially funded by CPA funds, because that whole million-dollar project had $300,000 of CPA funds, for which we are very grateful, and that we couldn't have done the project without it. But you have to be able to get into a historic house if you're going to be open to public. And we still are not able to use the ramp to get in the main entrance. So we have made all the parts for the porticoes. They're all, we've reproduced the moldings that are there in mahogany, so that they will last. You know you can't get any good pine nowadays. We have rebuilt this column, which was damaged in a fire that someone high on something set. That is now in place, and gave us the footprint for making the, repairing the other column. The roofer is on board. We've just got to be able to access the back before we can close up the front. This is a relatively minor project in relationship to what you've done for us over the years. If you notice, this photograph doesn't show the fence. And the fence was restored, beautifully restored, with CPA funds. So that, at that property, it was significant. At the Hale Farm, it's been transformational. The landscape, the house, the porch, the use of it is, and it couldn't be done without CPA funds. It simply could not be done. And so, that has also, then, we used that as leverage to raise money for the Balch House. So we've raised about $150,000 for the Balch House, both endowment and for work on that house. We got one more facade to go. So that's about $75,000 more that we're looking for, but we think we know where that money's going to come from. So we are, I am particularly grateful. I was, went to be on the Historic Beverly Board 40 years ago, and I never thought it could be possible, what we've gotten done. Thank you.
And Nancy, I think that concludes your
It does.
The highlight of the evening.
It does.
You know, when I first introduced Nancy, I didn't say a couple of words about her. First of all, she's currently the Beverly Housing Authority Representative on the committee. She, in the past, has also been, not also at the same time, the representative from the Parks and Recreation Commission. So she is such a valuable source for the committee and for the city when anything to do with community housing, anything to do with recreation, I mean, she's already, she's able to really help us ask the right questions, eyeball things very closely, and she's just such a wonderful person to work with, too. So thank you, Nancy.
And thank you for making sure I always got my way. Thank you very much.
That's not a difficult thing for you to do, I think, is to get your way. Next, we come to the scintillating part of the process. No, this is the nuts and bolts, the nuts and bolts of how to put an application together that can get funded. And I think you've heard from the various applicants who've come up, you know, especially, I think, from Lisa at the Larkham Theater. She didn't know about the CPC and the availability of funds for historic preservation. She did due diligence, and then she came in and worked with us, and rolled up her sleeves, became educated on it, and put together a wonderful application. And really did an outstanding job in making sure that the application put its best foot forward, if an inanimate object can do that, and to work through and answer all the questions and meet with us and go that extra mile. So I think that that type of really looking at and presenting it. Another person is Dan, who spoke earlier about basketball courts at Gillis Park, and helping to bring together a couple of the other projects that are happening at the park with that. He was really key behind the Pavilion Project because of the perseverance, I think, and Dan's still in the crowd, three, four years? I mean, just, yeah. But it doesn't have to take that long if you want to dive in and learn from Dan, from Lisa, from Dan and Andrew and everyone else. And I think the committee is a resource, and past applicants and folks who've gotten grants can be a resource to help you through this process. We want you to succeed, and we want to help you help Beverly be even better than it is. And it's a great city already. So let's talk for a few minutes about what the CPC can actually fund in terms of projects. If you can go to the next slide, thank you very much. The four categories are here. We have open space, historic preservation, recreation, which is in the budget, known as General Fund, and housing. And the CPA money can be granted for each one of these things. Let me start with open space, and let me give you the definition of open space, and then just talk nuts and bolts about what the money you can apply for, you know, so that you're really focusing on the right areas. Open space, land to protect existing and future wellfields, aquifers, and recharge areas, watershed land, agricultural land, grasslands, fields, forest land, fresh and saltwater marshes, and other wetlands, ocean, river, stream, lake, and pond frontage, beaches, dunes, and other coastal lands, lands to protect scenic vistas, land for wildlife or nature preserve, and land for recreational use. So the land, so the money can be used to acquire open space, to create it, to preserve it, but not to support it. It's really about the fundamentally making this open space and keeping it open space. And it's not able to be used to rehabilitate and/or restore it, to work on it, you know, that sort of thing, unless it was acquired with CPA funds. So if you have an idea for something to be used as open space, then you need to meet this. We can't just dive in and be supporting it if that open space has not been created by CPA funds. Next, in terms of historic preservation, Historic Resources, it says in the, in General Law 44B, building, structure, vessel, real property, document, or artifact listed on the State Register of Historic Places or determined by the Local Historic Preservation Commission to be significant in the history, archaeology, architecture, or culture of the city or town. So I think, as Wendy talked about before, this, these are funds to be able to use for any of those things, not necessarily for a building, could be for documents, could be for, you know, a mural, historic mural like we had, paintings, you know, you name it. It's there. For a facade at the Larkham Theater, for the rose window, if you're driving down Cabot Street these days, and you walk and drive by the Cabot Performing Arts Center, and you see the rose window, it's like 20 feet long, big arch that's opened up now for the first time since 50, 60, 70 years, something like that. This historic window, that's what the CPA funds went to. Cabot is in the middle of a very large project. I think it's $3 million, in and around that. And their grant was, with us, was just for the specific rose window part of restoring that window. And that's $55,944, I think it was. Why I remember that, I'm not quite sure. But that is 1.5% of the overall project. So sometimes, we play an important but small role in a project, and other times, we fund a lot of it. In this case, we can do, we could do acquisition with, for historic resources. Can we create it? No. It has to have already been determined to be historically significant for us, and we can't create it. They're historic, right? So preserve it, most definitely. To support it? No. To rehabilitate and/or restore it? Yes, definitely. So those are the purposes and uses there of the funds. For recreational land, we can acquire it, we can create it, we can preserve it, we can't support it, okay? And we can rehabilitate and/or restore it. And in the time that I've been on the committee, anyway, we've actually, I think, bought two parcels of land for recreational purposes on Simon Street. And we have done rehab and restoration at a dozen or more parks, just in the time that I've been on the committee. So, so anyway, those are the different uses there. And in terms of housing, yes, we can acquire it, create it, preserve it, we can support it. And I'll get to that in a second, but we, unless, if it was acquired with CPA funds, then we can also work to rehab and restore it as well. The support, for example, with affordable housing, one of the grants that we worked on during the pandemic was when people were losing their jobs, when, you know, the economy was really taking a hit at the very beginning, we put together a program to help people who were, I think it's 80% or below the average income in our region, if they were having difficulty with rental units, to be able to stay in their home. We put together that Rental Assistance Program. That would be in the, in the category of support for it, for example. But what we'll do during the application process is look at what funds a project is eligible to receive, and make sure that you're applying for something that actually meets the requirements of the law. And so that's one of the things that we'll work with you on as you're working on your applications. Next, we'll just go through important dates and deadlines. The first one, September 11th, 2025, is the Annual Informational Public Hearing. Congratulations, we have all successfully worked on that, because that is right now. So we can check that off in about 20 minutes. And then, a week from now, on September 18th, we're having our next regular meeting of the CPC. If you're interested in applying for a project, we encourage you to come to that meeting. If you have any questions about how the process works, we're available every meeting to help potential prospective applicants through the process. And so please come there. It's also September 18th, is the first deadline for submission of your project ideas, if they're in the category of historic preservation, to make sure you give the Beverly Historic District Commission the opportunity to deem your project site as significant, historically significant. So you need to apply on September 18th, if you have a historic preservation grant, to make sure that your property, your site is significant. And then they'll be able to consider that at their meeting on the September 25th. The pre-application prom are available for download now on the Community Preservation Committee website, or landing page on the Beverly City website. It's important to know that that is coming up so quickly. It's three, four weeks from today, but it's only a two-page document, so don't let it scare you too much. Next, October 15th, if you have a historic preservation project and you are unable to get on the agenda for the September 25th meeting of the Historic District Commission, then you're able to apply by the 15th to get on to their October's 22nd meeting. At our October and November meetings, we will be reviewing the pre-applications that have been filed, and we'll be doing that here. We meet here on Thursdays, on those Thursdays. And so every applicant is welcome to come. We'll be asking questions and working through that process. On December 1st, we'll announce, we'll let you know whether or not your project is eligible for funding, and if it is, then we'll invite you to submit a full application. On the 18th, we'll begin informational sessions during our meetings to help you along that process. And all full applications are due on January 14th. So that gives you about six weeks to put them together. And then, those applications will be up on the website. We ask the public to submit written comments, and we also encourage you to have people write letters of support, which also are part of the application process. And so those are going to be open until February 20, February 2nd. In April and May, we are going to be making our recommendations for funding, and during that time, usually, it's been in late April lately, but we, we need to present them to the city council in time for them to consider the projects and vote on them before the fiscal year ends. So, but typically, we can get that done by May or June, it depends on how many applications have come before the committee, really. And then, in June, we'll make the announcements, we'll let you know whether or not you've been funded, we'll put out an announcement, that sort of thing. I think that's all of the important dates. So this is the pre-application. Of course, I don't think anyone at home, unless you have a gigantic screen, can actually read this, but you can go on the website, and you can download it. And the pre-application is just a simple two-page application. And thanks to, well, first of all, Kristy Edwards, member of our committee, who's out of state. of state right now. Kristi, for the last three years, has worked every year to fine-tune and improve the applications themselves. If you think it's a lot now, and it's really not, okay, you should have seen it before she got her hands on it and said, "I'm going to really make this easier." So let's be friendly to everyone. And she has really spearheaded that. And then this year, we went from the 20th century into the 21st century because David and Jean worked together and we now have a PDF that's form-filled. You don't have to handwrite it, you don't have to type on it, you don't have to, you know, do any of those sort of things. You can actually just fill it out, which for us is a big leap. So thank you very much, David and Jean, for making that happen. And that's also true for the full application as well. The two things to remember about the pre-app, I wrote these things down. First of all, and I mentioned this before, if your project is in the historic preservation and you have an area that you can fill out what it's for and the purpose you have it, for example, historic preservation, rehab, and restoration, then you need to make sure that you're working to get the Historic District Commission to designate the site or property as historically significant. And the other thing here is there's a section here for the name of the owner of the property because sometimes we'll have an application come in, it'll be from the Recreation Department, for example, to help in a big rehab, they have planned for a park, for example. But in that case, they are also the owner, right? But if you have an idea and you're working on getting funding for a project for a park, for example, Gillis Park, then ultimately, you're going to need, not only just to let us know and make sure you know, but you'll need to be working to get the owner of the property to actually sign the application with you. So we'll be asking you about that through the process. You know, unless the applicant is on board, unless the owner is on board, then we can't give funds for that. I mean, we're just restricted. So, and so that's basically it. You know, for example, there's another site in town, I know that, another project idea that's out there where the property is owned and controlled by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So if they decided to go forward with the project, they would need the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Department of Transportation to actually sign off on the project and be a signature to the application. So you just work on that. October 9th, we're here to answer any questions. It's pretty simple. Put in all the different details, you write the project summary, have budget information at the very top, and there we go. You sign it and send it in. Next, I want to go to the full application. The full application, obviously, is not a two-pager, it's eight different sections with general information about the project, the category and purpose. Of course, we've already vetted those with you, so that should be pretty easy. The budget request and summary information, that's how much money, the overall cost of the project, things like that, project narrative. And this is where you can go into detail and write about your organization and the why you want to work on this project, what the outcome will be, what the benefits to the residents will be, what other support you have throughout the city. I mean, this is really something that you give a detailed description of what you have planned. And that's your project narrative, your budget, your schedule, and then there's some additional information that we'll be asking, and then the applicant and owner's signatures. We're going to call out, though, in the next slide, the budget and schedule, you'll see that those things are starred. Those are the two areas that applicants typically have the most difficulty. And so we really want to pull this out. So if you could go to the next slide, Jean, thank you. There's a budget form which makes it clear about, because we know how much you're asking for, but what are the sources of funding? The CPC, as we look at the application, does not expect to be the sole provider of funds. We're very interested in where else there are resources that you can go to and have. Sometimes it's the city will provide funds. Sometimes it's a foundation, sometimes it's the neighbors, a civic association, or some other source to be able to provide that funding. In the course of, you know, for both the Larkham and the Cabot Theaters, they provided funding as well and helped through their fundraising appeals to dedicate some of those monies to the project. So it's important for you to outlay what your sources of funding are, to show what percentage of each one of those sources are in terms of total funding. You know, so let's say it's 33 and 1/3, 33 and 1/3, 33 and 1/3, or, you know, whatever it is. And then to have an itemized project expenses. Now, sometimes if the project is straightforward, you know, it might be as simple as design costs and then labor costs and material costs. So it doesn't mean that you're going to have, you know, something that is a 20-point line item budget. The YMCA last year in their application, where they applied for historic preservation monies for the shoe shop building that's on their property, but it's historically significant. They had, I think it's a $30,000 project, it's not a lot, but they provided all of the information, they had three different sources of funding, and they also had two line items, labor and materials. But they based the labor and materials on qualified information that they detailed for us. So it wasn't just a, here it is, you know, 20,000. No, it's very specific in terms of what the cost is with information to back it up. And so we're going to be looking for that. The applicants really have to attain, so you have to be able to go out and get professionally prepared quotes. So you talk to vendors, contractors, and ask them how much it would cost for them to do the project in the area, this whole process. All of the instructions on how to do that are available on the website. And you can talk to the committee and other applicants about how they were able to pull that information together. Sounds more onerous than it is, but we just need you to go through that process because everything, these are valuable dollars from Beverly taxpayers and everyone has an obligation, the committee, the City Council, the city overall, to make sure that that money is spent well and right. And you, as an applicant, have a responsibility to be able to provide really thought-out, detailed, accurate estimates and numbers for us. And so it's that, that just has to go into it. And then, let's see, my other notes. In terms of project schedule, project starts, basically, we want to make sure that we have enough information from you in terms of when you expect, what are the milestones the project has? If you have a design, build, and evaluate project, or you have some sort of a, like a, the Group A mural, there was the project milestone of having it taken off of the wall of the former McDonald's and transported to the conservators who are going to be doing the work. And then the conservators schedule through the process. And then from there, okay, now it's going to be the installation in the Beverly Public Library. So there are a whole series of different timelines that were able to be spelled out. So you do that for us so that we know and have a sense as to how long this project is going to take and be able to have something to measure you with. Further, as you go through the project, if we give you money, these will become part of a memorandum of understanding that you'll sign that will detail, basically, it's like a contract so that you can get your money and it spells out what everyone's responsibilities are. So this, it starts here. When you go on the website, you'll also be able to get a frequently asked questions document, an FAQ, and you can look at that. There'll be all of the eligibility criteria that we've talked about tonight, other resources and links that you can go to to get ideas, to look at other applications, to see how other narratives were put together, other budgets were put together, all of those things, resources down to being able to understand. If you have a project that's going to cost, you know, $200,000, then there's a bidding process that has to be followed. So you should be aware of that. So that information is there. So everything is there for you, it's, and we're here to walk through that process with And I think that's it. I'm going to ask the committee, is there anything I missed in going over it? I think that's it. I'm going to open this up to questions. Does anyone have any questions? Members? Do members have questions? Everything's pretty quiet here. Does anyone want to say anything before we wrap the meeting up? Besides encouraging, we'd like to have as many applications as possible on all these different areas and more. If you have an idea of a project, it doesn't have to be, you know, for something that you're going to, or expect to put an application in for in October, but who knows? Come to our meetings. Get in touch with us. Jean Delios's email is, and I think your phone number, too, is on the website, and so you can call Jean, talk to Jean. She can put you in touch with us. Come to our meetings. And we really want to help use the funds we have to benefit and grow Beverly even more than it is now. So with that, if no one else has anything to say, I'd welcome a motion to close the Motion to adjourn, is there a second? Seconded. Always in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for your attention tonight, and we hope to see you here. Good night.